Stand and everybody please behave accordingly as we are being taped and videotaped and monitored and so forth and so on. The only comment I'm going to have tonight is a standard comment from our board is that everybody will have a chance to speak during their meetings if so moved, and the public will have one five minute, each person you'll get one five minutes to speak, one time coming up. So just to keep the meeting controlled and the meetings must be spoken through here and not through the audience. All right, so item number one, that was my comments. Item number two, SP 117-004, Panera Bread, 1334 Park Street, landscape bond release of $31,500.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to mention that to the most of the audiences here for one item, it's at the, I'd let them know it is the new item, it's at the end of the agenda. So we need, just letting the public know that we are going through the, we have to go through the agenda.
Okay.
So Panera's one year landscape has been up. I've inspected it, everything's fine. You know, I'm recommending that they, for release.
I actually have one question, and what it is, is the queue ramp to go up to the takeout, there was...
Just get closer.
Going, the queue ramp going up for takeout, was there ever a stop sign supposed to be there before going across?
I'd have to look back at the approved plan, I don't recall if there was, I think there was a stop sign.
Craig, I think there was, no, it was, I think it might have been in the pavement.
It was painted on the...
It's supposed to be painted, right. I don't think it's a separate sign, I think it's painted on the pavement.
And the reason I brought it up because twice I've had two cases where I'm going around there and a car has cut through there and they don't want, they're going right to the takeout, so.
We can, it's not landscaping, but you know what, I know that the, I know that Ron, with the contractor is there, we could take a look at it, he's been very accommodating. If it wasn't required and it's a small internal stop sign, we could take a look at it with engineering and talk to him about it.
I'm good with that.
And talk to Panera about it, but this is...
A safety issue.
We did the inspection and the ASBIL, so everything that was on the plans was there. Sometimes once a project is built, you're like, oh, I wish I'd done this, but we can always, you know, if it's a safety issue, I think Panera will want to do that, wouldn't you think so, Ron?
Yeah, just let us know, it shouldn't be an issue, but just let us know.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Oh, can I have a motion to...
I make a motion to release the bond, $31,500.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number three, SP 19-001, Heron Cross and Sola LLC, map 89, lot 142, landscape bond release of $65,000.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll let Mr. Murphy talk a minute. The last time this was up, a couple of months ago, you did not release it, I've, you know, Mr. Murphy had talked about some dead plant material, I went out with Mr. Murphy, there are seven arborvitae that they've agreed to replant, they were hoping to get it planted, I did not get confirmation, but I'm requesting that, you know, that you authorize the release subject to them replacing the seven, and I do not, I make a recommendation, and I've discussed this with Mr. Murphy, that we, you know, this has been in, going on years that they've had it, that we don't hold a bond for seven arborvitae.
The discussion, again, I met with Bill and the contractor, and I believe it was 10, but...
10, I think seven or 10, they know what it is.
I'm all set to release the bond on your approval once the bushes are done.
Okay, once they're planted.
That's my motion.
Anybody else have any second? Do I have a second to it, please? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number four, continued public hearing will be held to petition a site plan review, SP 24-006, located at 120 Stockwell Drive, assesses map 92 lots 22 and 24 in the I Industrial Zoning District. The applicant Costco Wholesale Corporation, Horseshoe Drive Sterling, Virginia, is represented by Kevin Coughlin, Esquire Gulstein, One Post Office Square, Boston, master site plan review under section 10.6.2 for members only fuel facility consisting of freestanding canopy, equipment enclosure, clerk in the loop enclosure, and 12 dispensing provided 24 fueling positions. They requested a continuance to June 26, 2025, are we okay with that?
Yep.
All right, can I have a motion to accept that continuance?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Item number five, continued public hearing, we held a petition of applicant property owner Richard Piazza of Suburban Electric Contracting for site plan review under section 10.6 to construct 6,995 square feet of industrial office contractor bay building and 16 parking spaces, landscaping and stormwater drainage system. The applicant is represented by Strong Point Engineering Solutions of West Bridgewater, the property located at 271 Canton Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072, assesses map 43 lot 118 in the industrialized zoning district. They have requested a continuance to June 26, 2025. Have a motion to accept their continuance.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Item number six, continued public hearing on case file number SP 25-007 and SPP 25-002 will be held at the petition of applicant property owner Antonio Rita, trustee Roma Realty Trust, 15 Felix Street, Dedham, Mass. 02026, requests a site plan review under section 10.6 to construct an 18-unit, three-story multifamily building with parking, landscaping, drainage, and site improvements. The special permit request is to allow for the following waivers, section 6.1.7.9 to allow the parking within the front yard setback, 6.1.7.10 to allow the refuse truck to back into Wyman Street, section 6.4.4 to allow the clearing of the trees on the lot, section 10.6.10.1 to not provide traffic impact assessment. The properties are located at 3 and 23 Morton Street, assesses map 54 lots 421 and 422 in the Stoughton Center District, Stoughton Center District Flex Zone. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Attorney Barry O'Krimmons of 909 Washington Street in Stoughton, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Antonio Rita, who's seated with me here at the table, who is the trustee of Roma Realty Trust, who is the applicant on this application for site plan approval. As you know, this is in the new Stoughton Center District and within the Flex sub-district, so the use is allowed as of right, and what we have applied for is for site plan approval and then a couple of waivers as the chairman read during the public hearing notice. We were here on April 24th for our initial hearing, at that time staff went over the points in the technical review memo. Since then, there has been a follow-up memo, and I think the best approach for tonight, Mr. Chairman, is, I believe our project engineer, Mr. Scott Henderson from Henderson Consulting Services, is on the call, so if we could give the floor to Scott and he can address what has been done since the last meeting and what is left to be done. Scott, are you there?
I'm there. For the record, I'm Scott Henderson of Henderson Consulting, the project civil engineer. The plan before you tonight is, you know, fairly similar to what you saw in the first application. As Barry mentioned, we had a tech review letter that had 20-some comments, I think, in the first half, most of those were drainage and detail related, some updates to notation, consistency between plan sets, things like that. You know, from the top down, we have basically the same layout as was presented before, a main access off of Morton Street, building near the intersection, dedicated curb cut off of Wyman for trash access and things like that, made sort of dimensional adjustments to those things, and received a second technical review letter, I think that has eight outstanding comments, most of which are fairly benign, some of them are, Scrivener's errors on plans, just to update for consistency, a comment about some screening plantings and work within the right of way, that bisects the project site in the butts, make it 78 Wyman Street property, making sure that that own property owner is on board with what we're proposing within their half of that private right of way. Some additional information on lighting was requested, we omitted a plan sheet that had specifications for the parking lot light and the wall packs of the building, we'll provide those in an updated plan set. There was a request for detail for the trash enclosure, which is included in our architectural plan set, that might have just been overlooked, but we can make sure that that's detailed for the engineering department to review. And then some updated information on drainage, which we can provide. So there isn't much outstanding, not a lot has changed, the general project program as you've seen it remains the same, so we can answer any specific questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Roth Town Planner, as the engineer surmised, the first five comments are planning-related, usually engineering has more comments than I do, but I take the lead on this one. The landscape comments are quite minor, they're just, you know, some consistency issues. We will need something from the applicant, Barry, I don't know what you're going to do regarding the plantings against 78 Wyman, if it's just a letter, we'll need something, we may have to put that, it's the plantings along here. And there's a, I believe you're proposing a fence, was a fence agreed to with the owner? It looks like there's a screen fence, too, I'm not quite sure on the plan set.
And there was a discussion we had at the last meeting of what they were going to put there, and they didn't have an idea at that point in time.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, so if I can chime in, just, Bill, on that point, that's maybe a question for Antonio, the applicant, I know he's been, had some discussions with the abutter, I know she's aware that we intend to provide some screening for their benefit, including the fence, which is included on the plan there along that property line, and then those screening plantings there. I think the abutter's concern was mostly that they used their portion of that right of way for a couple parking spaces and wanted to maintain that condition, and that's reflected in the layout for that access drive, our trash access. It allows them to park a couple cars there, and we still have dimensional, you know, availability for a trash truck to get into those dumpsters. But we have discussed internally as a team getting either an email or a letter or something from that abutter saying that they're fine with the screening fence and those plantings. If for some reason that's not the case, I think we would just omit those.
Right, and I'll just look at a, most likely a condition that that be provided or this or that. The one thing, it looked like the fencing detail for the property, it's not in your engineering set, it's really on the landscape set, they didn't have the proper footings and all the details, Scott, that you typically would do. But I, and they didn't list the materials, but it appears that you want a tongue-in-groove or wooden cedar, you know, it looked like a very nice cedar fence, that is, would require the board, you know, to specifically approve and allow. So if that, if that detail can be changed, but if we can actually have some sort of confirmation from Anthony or Antonio tonight about what the fencing he wants to propose, if the board's fine with it, then make sure it's on the detail.
Okay.
So if... You need to state your name for the record.
Oh, sorry, Antonio.
And you've got to really go close to the mics, nope, it's on green.
It was on. Oh, Antonio Rita, Motherbrook, sorry, Roma Realty Trust, and yeah, there was white vinyl fencing.
Oh, it's white vinyl?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's what we were proposing, yes.
Okay. What is the fencing proposed, because I, Scott, I looked on the details sheet, what's, is proposed for the trash enclosure?
So the trash enclosure is detailed on the architectural plan set, which I get is also maybe you...
We discussed that to be similar to the veneer on the foundation.
Correct, but I don't, I don't have an architectural set, I have the, unless it's, is it within the...
Yeah, if you look at the McKay Architects Plan Set, it's sheet A-2.4.
Okay, I don't have that, so I have landscaping and I have your engineering set that has landscaping and I have the colored rendering landscaping.
Okay, maybe, I thought we had plotted the architecturals, too, but maybe that was our oversight.
They are way on the back, so...
Yeah, so it's going to be, we'll have that detailed in an updated plan set to you.
It's actually in here?
Yeah.
So you're looking at using the same, similar veneer as the base veneer of the building?
Exactly, and at the same, basically the same height, too, so there's some consistency there, but you know, well, that's the intent there, and then swinging doors on the front.
Okay.
So...
Okay, then you've addressed all of mine, and obviously you just need to put the cut sheets on the lighting plan.
Yeah, yeah, I forgot that sheet, that's my fault. They're dark sky compliant LED packs, so...
And I'll let Craig talk to the, kind of the one engineering, other engineering comments.
Yeah, thank you. So the revised set of plans addresses, you know, all of the engineering comments that we had, stormwater has been updated and satisfactory, all the utility connections are good. The one thing that we were looking at, I know there was some discussion, I wasn't at the meeting when this was discussed, but the front of the building up at the intersection of Morton and Wyman, the grating there, as shown on the site plans, would have the front portion of the building buried a little bit. I think that was discussed, that there was going to be a wall along the back of the sidewalk or something to drop that grade.
Right, they talked about a wall, but they had also talked about interacting because you were going to be updating the right of way in that area also, so it was going to be a coordination between your update of the right of way and then...
So they're moving forward with as it is now with kind of burying the front half of the building? We're not looking to revise the grades of the roadways in that area, so...
No, I think it was just a curb, and the curb location, the way, what I was understanding anyway, from what was explained last meeting.
Okay.
Are you, am I wrong on that?
No, that's not how I understood it, I thought they were going to put a small retaining wall at the back edge of the, not necessarily at the edge of the sidewalk, but somewhere along the front of the building so that they can drop that elevation and maintain that single level.
That was discussed, and what the way it was left, I understood, was they were going to coordinate with you as to how that was going to happen because of the reconfiguration of the sidewalk and curb in that area.
I think the configuration as shown is how we're moving forward, and I think that the grating for the site in the front area...
Then that needs to be revised.
Should be revised, unless they plan to bury the front of the building, which can be done, but it's a stem wall for the front, so they're burying up to the windows.
Right.
I think Scott has a comment on that, Craig.
Go ahead, Scott.
If I can chime in on that, I think that the solution will probably sit somewhere in between a small retaining wall and stem wall. I know, Craig, you weren't there last time, we talked about our intent is to have a portion of that front part of the building, a little bit buried to look great, just because it's, you know, working with topography for ADA compliance with the sort of parking lot and the main entrance there, kind of drives where that first floor is now. But on that updated plan set, I think, I think you're right, that I think a small retaining wall, step that, this is a small retaining wall, to step that 229 contour down, maybe a foot or two, would reduce our need for a stem wall to something in the 12 to 24-inch range, and so I'll look at that, we're going to be submitting an updated set, so I'll send you something, but you're right, we're not intending to change any grading on the road, so I think we can solve that, it's a fair comment to have, so...
Great, thank you, that works for me.
Question?
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, okay.
Do you want to continue with Craig? Are you all done? I'll ask questions later. Richard, thanks, Don, go ahead.
Okay, my question is regarding the plantings. On your plan, you have 13, I'm sorry, 23 evergreens, and you only have six shade trees, like maples and honey locusts. I would suggest that that be reversed, that's a five-to-one ratio, and the broadleafed shade trees are significantly more efficient in sequestering carbon than the evergreen trees.
My name is Lotta Jamian from Sean Package Landscape Architecture, and we could certainly review introducing a few more shade trees where it is appropriate along the perimeter of the parking lot, and I think we could still achieve summertime deciduous screening where it's desired with those modifications.
And, Mr. Terry, in looking at it, there are two areas I can highlight, there's an area that's right in, if you look on, you see where my cursor's going?
Yep.
There's a parking area right here that could produce a shade tree and one over here. The problem is, this site is to sight, putting a shade tree here or here or here, I think, from our perspective, especially with this intersection, as bad as it is, we want clear sight distance, don't limbs overhanging, but there's just, it's a tight space that doesn't provide for a canopy, they could put a columnar tree in, but it still doesn't get the effect, so I see where you can come from. I believe you could add two more canopy trees in the parking lot, one where the, this island is, and one back here where they're going to have this retaining wall.
I think that makes sense. Scott, correct me, one of these islands has a light pole in it for the parking area, is that correct?
Yeah, the intermediate one does have a pole.
That's the problem.
So we chose something that stays relatively, you know...
Yeah, so yeah, the island here does have the light pole. Unfortunately, the electric, the landscape architects, the electricians like to plant the light pole in the same place they plant, the landscape architects plant a tree, so it looks like...
Or vice versa. Or vice versa.
Or vice versa. They, light poles and street and parking lot trees get planted in the same hole on plans, so I think that that would be difficult for that, but they could put one over here in the corner, would that be correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm asking the landscape architect.
That location could work.
Would that be sufficient, Mr. Terry?
Yes, considering what you've just explained, yes, that would be helpful, thank you.
Yeah, I don't want a shade, from our perspective, Craig and I don't want big canopy shade trees in this greened area here, that, up in front, you could put one there, but we think it's a safety issue.
Okay, good, thank you.
And Rich, we don't want to block that clock that you like, either.
Exactly. Just going back to that retaining wall, I know it isn't set yet, but I would hope that it would be set so that there's a, some distance from the sidewalk that elevates so that you don't have like a sharp drop off near the sidewalk, whether you do it with grass or even if you do like a fence or something, I mean, design it with that purpose so that it's a, it's a safe setup, that's all.
Yeah. Well? I'm good.
Go ahead.
Two questions I have is, one is the, we have the dumpster, and you're going to have a... to have a 15-foot wide gate on it, but what I'm looking at is the ADA compliant walkway coming into the side of the dumpster there. Are you going to have a gate there for the people to get in or do they have to walk around and open up the 15-foot gate to utilize the dumpster?
Uh, I, I think we'll have a, a mandor access on that side to be able to get in, um, on that. We'll make sure that that's detailed.
Typically, they should probably put a gate, um, so we can, we'll, we'll have them, I'm sure they can revise the architecture plan to put a gate, a gate at the, where the walkway is. That way, that way that you don't have the dumpster, you know, we have a very big problem with the, the, the front dumpster gates always being open.
Being left open, right.
Because they, that's their only access, so a second access.
And the other question I have is, you have a big tree on that corner there where it would be accessed through the dumpster. Will that tree interfere, uh, see up in the upper, where the dumpster is, if you go to the slight right to that, what kind of tree is that there? I didn't...
Here?
No, keep going to the entrance, right there.
Uh, that there is, is called out as a sugar maple at the moment.
It's a what?
It's a sugar maple. It's a maple.
Right, but would that tree, as it grows out, interfere with the, uh, trash truck coming in to pick up the dumpster?
They'll have to maintain it or cut it.
No.
It's a maintenance.
It shouldn't, that shouldn't be an issue. They've got a wide selection, so...
Maintain it so it doesn't happen. Trim it back and as needed.
Other dumpster will take it out, one or the other. All right. I have one more question.
Go ahead, Paul.
We always ask this one. Uh, for the, uh, snow removal, uh, where are you going to put the snow?
They have that on the engineering plan. I just pulled up the, the illustrative plan because it's easier to show.
Do you have the elevation on a, on a, on a slide?
The elevations? Yes, sir.
Usually not.
Um, I'm, I'm, one beauty about here is I can log into our system. They're on the, the large size sheet. Um, Craig has them. I, I don't see them. They, they were in the plan set, but they were not included digitally.
Okay. I just don't recall when the, on the elevations, what were we doing about mechanicals and how were those being screened and that type of stuff on the elevation of the building?
If the architect or engineer can talk about that.
Yeah, I will. So the condenser locations, um, is it where I can share my screen, Bill?
What?
Can I share my screen? Is that doable?
Yep.
So that's going to be stepped out.
Yeah.
They don't give you a distance though.
Okay. Can everybody see this? This is the, the roof plan and the updated architecturals here. Um, so there's a, um, condenser enclosure in this area.
Barry, it's down there.
Barry, it's down there.
That doesn't help.
Oh, wait. There we go.
Is that where we're looking for?
They're on all the monitors now.
Okay.
Nope. They're on all the monitors.
All right, so this elevation is looking from Morton Street. You can see the intent is to have, um, you know, an enclosure on the top here for, uh, the AC condensers and you'll see a small area where the, um, elevator, um, mechanicals extended above the main roof line. Uh, looking at the top-down roof plan, uh, that AC condenser pad is set pretty far back, uh, from the edge of the parapet along the, the perimeter. So odds are you, you won't see much, if anything, uh, of that enclosure. Uh, so that's where tho, those condenser utilities are. Uh, and then we left an area, um, along the Morton Street side to be prepared, uh, for solar if that's ever installed in the future, so...
So what is that screening going to be made of though? What, what type of material?
Uh, I, I wish I, I can't, unfortunately, I, I can't answer that. I don't know if, um, if Antonio, if you had discussions with Mike about that, the architect. I imagine it would just be, um, some sort of hardy siding, but...
It's typically a hardy or vinyl, along those lines.
Yeah.
I think there's something that you'd have, because it's buried, where's the elevation of the building and stuff? You should have an answer, so that blends in with whatever colors and stuff we're doing at the next meeting. The other question, now that I'm looking at the roof, um, you, you call for 2,000 square foot solar ready roof area, which I agree, that's part of what we have to do with the code and stuff these days. However, depending on what you're doing there for solar, uh, it may be that those panels are higher than the parapet and the roof. We don't want that type of thing coming down, so we need to have some sort of, figure out what you're doing in those areas. You're real close to the edge of the roof with what you're calling for your solar area.
I got you. Yeah, that won't happen if that's the case, so it won't be, um...
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, we have to try to do something on a conditional on those lines. Anybody else on the board have any questions? Anybody from the public have any questions on this particular project? I'm assuming Barry, you're going to ask for continuance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I believe, Bill, we, we're looking at June 12th?
Um, yeah. There are minor changes. Um, I know that, uh, I've talked with them. If they want to look at submitting us electronically, Craig and I revise changes next week. Uh, I think we will review it, uh, and then we can have a, a recommendation for, um, a findings and approval for this. And then you can, and have the fir, and leave the hearing open to have the further discussion on the, the screening of the rooftop units.
Okay.
That's how I was going to proceed.
So we're going to ask for an extension to June 12th then?
Yes, please.
Okay, can I have a motion to that effect?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Chairman, Antonio brought samples. Uh, do you want to just, we...
Oh, okay. The building material samples?
Yeah.
I don't need them.
You don't need them? Okay. I know the question came up at the last meeting, so I just...
Yeah, no, I, could you leave them with him? I'll take a look at them. Thank you. I appreciate it. We did ask for them, you're right. That was part of the reason I was asking for materials.
All right, I'll do that.
Thank you. Item number seven. Continued public hearing will be held to petition of the applicant and owner of VFW Bruce Wood LLC, 30 Ellis Road, Newton, Mass., represented by Attorney Barry O. Crimmins, 909 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. for case file SPP 24-003, special permit for section 7.1 for flexible residential development. The proposal is to create 20 single-family dwelling unit residential developments on approximately 28-acre parcel with related infrastructure. The property is located at Zero Eagle Rock Road, located behind One Eagle Rock Road. Assesses map 8, Lot 17, and residential ARA zoning district. It's been continued since April 24, 25. Go ahead, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Attorney Barry O. Crimmins, 909 Washington Street in Stoughton. I'm here along with our project engineer, Mr. Eric Dais from Strong Point Engineering.
Excuse me, what plan do you want up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, let's just go with the layout plan to start with. I think it's sheet C2.
And we do have, uh, the, uh, owner of the property, Dimitri Baskin, is, uh, out in Wisconsin, but he is on the meeting remotely. And do we have anyone else remotely?
Uh, yes, we have, um, Michael De La Fave, who is the architect from Rhodey. Um, and we have Anton Almeida, who is our landscape architect from NDLA.
So those, uh, those folks are not necessarily, uh, going to present to the board tonight. They're here primarily in case any of the members or any members of the public may have any questions. Uh, but with that, Mr. Chairman, I think in the interest of time, I will turn it over to Eric.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so the last time that we were here, we had received comments from the developmental services department. Uh, we had not had an opportunity to respond to those at that time, so we did present to the board. We got some very good feedback from the board. Um, and we were still in the process of going through the conservation commission comments as well. So since that time, we did submit revised plans to both the conservation commission and, um, the develop, the, excuse me, the developmental services department. That always trips me up. Um, and we have actually gotten a few comments back from, from that response. Those comments are very manageable. They are largely requests for additional information or some tweaks, nothing that we feel is going to impact the design at all. But just a couple that I, I wanted to highlight. Um, one is a comment about the septic system. So we talked about this last time. We, the septic system is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health. Now, we've done extensive, um, soil testing out there and we are finalizing our septic design to submit formally to the Board of Health. But we have done enough to know that what we're proposing is going to work. And the comment, um, from developmental services is, and I'm paraphrasing, but the board would like some level of comfort that we're on the right track with septic. I think what the concern is, is that this board maybe renders a decision and then the septic changes dramatically and we end up back here for some sort of a modification or something like that. Um, I'm very confident with that, but I have reached out both to Larry Perry, the Board of Health agent, um, and Zenith Consulting, who is doing a peer review on the septic and just asked them to provide the board with some indication, um, you know, shy of a formal submittal, that we are, you know, the, the location proposed for the septic is appropriate based on the soil conditions that we know are out there, things like that. So I'm coordinating that effort with them and that will be forthcoming.
Eric, thank you for stating that. There has been, um, just for the record, and Bill may want to read it or he can give it to me to read in, there was a letter from one of the, from one of the abutters, very much concerned about that particular item.
Yes.
So I appreciate you addressing it, but I do want to make sure that it is, you brought it up. It's, this is a certification from the Board of Health that has to go through. It's not really a planning board issued to say that the septic system is good or bad. However, I appreciate you bringing it up and I do think that it would be part of our review to make sure we have something that states that the septic system is going to work in that area or it does affect your entire site.
Exactly. And I, I think to that end, i- it makes practical sense that this board should have at least a level of comfort that it's not going to change dramatically as we move through a formal process with the Board of Health, which, like I said, I am very confident in. In fact, we're working with the folks, um, at Ochsenn, uh, to provide an alternative, um, soil absorption system that does two things. It allows us to grade it into the landscape, uh, better, so we don't have to level an entire location of the site. Um, and the other thing it does is it does provide enhanced stormwater treatment of left one before it makes its way into the soil and hits the groundwater. So we're definitely, you know, being very proactive on that and, and the applicant is, you know, kind of going above and beyond what is required from a regulatory perspective. Um, so we're very confident that that's going to work out well. Um, the other thing that I just wanted to walk through is, uh, there was a, a comment for us to provide a formal waiver request or a formal list of waivers. As we talked about, this was site plan review, not a subdivision, so it's a little bit different than what we usually see, uh, with something like this. So there are three waivers that we've come down to are, one is a waiver, the meets, the open space needs to be defined by meets and bounds ultimately. So we've simply requested a waiver that that be made a condition of approval. That way, if things change, if lines get tweaked as we're moving through this process, we're not duplicating efforts. Um, and that's something that is, is somewhat typical that we can provide that it's, it's really just technical data once we're done. Um, the other one was, and I'm going from memory because I brought the wrong plan up here right now. Um, the other one was to set benchmarks on the site. Uh, we are required to have two benchmarks on the site. They're currently not there. Um, our request was to, again, make that a condition of approval, um, that we will set those benchmarks before we get moving, uh, for construction. Again, that's pretty typical. And on a site like this, we're going to need way more than two. There's going to be temporary benchmarks. There's going to be, you know, multiple benchmarks throughout the site as we progress this project. So we thought that was an appropriate request. Um, and then the last one, and this kind of falls in that weird zone, um, between site plan review and subdivision, is a request, a requirement for us to provide architectural information on specific, um, facade treatments and things like that. Since there's 20 different units here and those are all kind of, you know, they're almost buyer-based, uh, what we've done is we provided a typical, um, that we've gone through, um, of, of the dimensions of the unit, uh, the floor plan of the unit, the general look. Um, and obviously this will be a community unto itself and things within the community will be, um, congruent, um, amongst themselves. So we thought that those were appropriate waiver requests. Um, if there was, aside from the septic, I think something that the board voiced a desire for at the last meeting was a sidewalk. Um, so we did add a sidewalk to the plans. Um, we did split the sidewalk, so it, it goes on one side of the street and then crosses to the other. Uh, the, the staff had a comment, just put it on one side of the street. So that's one thing that we'll revise and we'll get that back in. Um, and really, as, as far as things go, that's about the summary. Um, our next stop is Conservation Commission. It's actually later tonight, uh, as soon as we wrap up here. And I think we're in a very good position, so I'm intending to close the Conservation Commission meeting tonight and hopefully be back at your, either June 12th or 26th meeting with revised plans and a clean Bill of Health. But certainly glad to answer any questions.
Some of the other comments that I had read were, and again, I know this comes down to permitting and a lot of other things, but is, is blasting. I know you're, you're trying to restrict the blasting because you're not doing deep foundations or even four-foot frost walls with the types of foundations you're doing.
Sure.
However, do explain if you've gotten into it all, what your blasting parameters are going to be and where you're going with that type of thing.
Absolutely. So the, and I'm going to use the term ledge removal rather than blasting because it could very well be that some of this is removed by hammer, uh, depending on the type of rock that we ultimately have out there. Uh, but yes, either blasting or hammering is going to be required. Most of that is going to come from roadway construction at the cul-de-sac, which is the area where we have a bit of, um, cut from the existing grade, um, which that, the benefit of that is it is central to the site, right? That is about as far away from anybody as we're going to get. Um, and the rest of ledge removal is going to be at the entranceway there. There's no way around that. We have to go through that to get in. Um, and aside from that, I anticipate ledge removal to be the result of trenching for utilities, namely the sewer, because that's the deepest utility that we have in a few different locations. Um, and it's the collection network, not the soil absorption system. Um, so the short version is that blasting permits are regulated, um, by the building department and the fire department. There are very specific requirements that need to be had with regard to seismic activity. Um, those are all determined by what's called a pre-blast survey. And they, the blasting company will evaluate the properties surrounding the site, uh, site conditions. Uh, there's basically a plug-and-chug formula that they come up with that says you cannot have a blast that results in seismic activity beyond this point because anything beyond that starts to have a potential to impact the abutters. And that is, there's a pretty significant safety factor built in there. Um, so all of that is to say that it will be very much overseen. Um, it will be limited. It can be done very safely, uh, no matter what the method is that's, that's opposed to do that. And frankly, if we can't, we don't get the permit, we don't build.
Very good. And, um, I don't recall, do we have underground retention, we have the detention basins or was it, was it all above ground? I can't remember.
No, the, the, um, the latest design constructs a berm at the, the base of the slope to capture the, the storm water.
Yeah.
Um, so it's sort of a, a natural stormwater management area.
On-site flow. Yeah, the original design had all of the underground that we were opposed to.
Yes.
And the, the calculations, I, I know you're pretty good with this, but are not showing anything going offsite more than what's going offsite now?
Uh, no, we wouldn't allow that. Um, and the advantage to this design versus the, the other design as well is that it has multiple discharge points which will spread the, the water out. discharge points, which will spread the water out. That does flow out of the basin in a more natural condition, whereas the design before, you know, discharged it through one pipe. So, it's a vast improvement over the previous design.
Yes.
The one thing I'd like to add, and Eric didn't talk about this, but the access to the berm and the septic system, they've requested that that be a condition of approval, sort of a field fit. They want to kind of naturally, you know, save trees and find the best spot in the field to put that in. But I do think it's worth at least mapping it out on this set of plans, even if it does evolve during construction. And the reason why I think that's important is that the absorption field for the septic system, can you scroll down just a little bit? Which is behind a number of houses and, you know, the stormwater berm, it might be difficult to get to through various points, and they may end up having to push a couple of these houses further away so that they can, you know, get an access way back there. I think it's something we should think about now so that the layout of some of these homes doesn't change significantly later on.
Yeah, I completely agree with that. My intention behind the request is that we want to save as many trees as we can. So, what we were looking for was just some flexibility. We know that we need access, but just some flexibility in the field.
We can give you flexibility, and we do this other sites too, you know, as times are going on, if you've got mine, the site can change, as you can just come back before us and say, we need to move this, you know, 100 feet this way for whatever reason.
Right.
And we can just review that as we're going, but at least, like Craig said, you've got a location, and you've dealt with the issues around that location, I think is important ahead of time.
And that's what I was going to say. I think that that makes sense to identify it, and, you know, if it does need to change in the field, I wouldn't expect it to change by 100 feet. I'd expect it to change by 10, so we can avoid a big tree, something like that. But yeah, we're going to add that to the plan. I think that it's a logical request. It makes sense.
And we know it's conceptual that you want to field locate it.
Right, right.
So, I do have a couple of comments, which, the first thing, and it was not addressed, there were, the previous engineer, Patriot Engineering, submitted a home of documentation. If you want to come to my office and look through it, take out what is not appropriate. I do not wish to have it in the file. The fancy, whatever that, whatever that stuff from the wastewater nitrogen thing, he listed subdivision waivers, which were not necessary, and then, you know, update the file, because I really.
Sure.
And it's more of a management issue for me.
What I would suggest at this point, and you're right, I neglected to respond to that in my response to comments. If it's site plan or septic-based, and it didn't come from my office, we can take it out of the file. What we've submitted through this round between the last meeting, what we've discussed here and what we're discussing here tonight, supersedes what was submitted prior.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, and it, you know, we may take a look at the narrative, you know.
Sure.
And that sort of thing. One of the things we did receive, and I know, we did receive comment, and I forwarded the email to the board, and I also forwarded it to you and Barry and the applicant. I'm not going to read the entire letter. It's an email from Wednesday, May 21st, 2025, given to me, emailed to myself at 7:43 PM by Mr. Don Cox. It outlines several issues. It's addressed to myself and the board. One is blasting operation and potential impacts. Number two was about protection and mapping of private wells. Number three is the septic system approval process. Number four is utility infrastructure and responsibilities. Number five, stormwater management and runoff control. And number six, homeowners association. Some of these are, you know, are, you know, can be answered tonight. But I would like you, in any resubmittal, to please address this.
Sure.
So, it's, as far as, they are very detailed, very well-written, and very well-thought-out.
Sure, absolutely.
It's, so, and a lot of them, you know, are really, you know, what's the blasting? And I believe Mr. Cox is going to be here, and he'll probably talk during the thing.
Sure.
I know he's been in constant contact with me. Every time you get plans, I always email him to him, so he's very involved.
Sure, sure.
And has put a lot, and there's a lot of issues that, you know, for protecting the neighbors. So, you really do need to look at addressing these comments.
Yeah, we'll do that. If I may, just to comment on that very briefly, of the six items, you know, bullet list items, topics that were raised in that letter, I think we've talked about three of them being blasting, septic, and stormwater.
Right.
The other ones, just to touch base very quickly, is existing wells. All of our work is more than 100 feet away from any existing well. The regulatory presumption is that as long as you are more than 100 feet away from an existing well, there is no impact. So, certainly well within regulatory rights. But additionally, with regard to things like stormwater and septic specifically, we have provided treatment and enhanced treatment of those things that might eventually in some way affect groundwater. Utility and infrastructure will be entirely private. We talked before, they are, these are going to be individual wells, it's going to be individual septic. The only utility that we're actually bringing into the site is electric, which is obviously governed by the utility agency, no natural gas. And all of those things will be run and maintained by a homeowners association, which is the last item on the list. There will be a homeowners association. I believe this board often conditions that the town receive copies of the homeowners agreements, so that way, the maintenance require, first, so they review it and make sure that the maintenance requirements for those things are spelled out and are adequate. But two, if there's ever a complaint made to the town, they know who to contact.
That also supposed to get recorded.
And we will be reviewing those. There will be a condition.
Yes.
And it also has to be recorded with.
It gets recorded.
It's recorded with the plan, so it all has to get done, yes.
Yeah, so we will certainly draft the formal response to that email for the record. There are valid concerns raised in that email, but they are things that, you know, just for the board's peace of mind, and hopefully Mr. Cox's peace of mind, they are things that we've certainly considered and have, they're either regulated by this board, or they're regulated by another process in town, and there's not a way around them.
Okay. Is that it? Anybody in the board have any questions?
Yeah, you mentioned about the septic system. That this is, this is different than a normal septic system. It's actually going to be treated before it goes to the leaching field.
That is correct, yes.
So, that's, that's a big plus with the abutters and concerns about their well. It's not just sediment at the bottom of a tank. What comes up to the surface goes into the ground. It's then treated before it goes into the ground.
Yeah, the septic, the treatment for a system like this comes in two parts. One, through the tank, because it settles solids and things like that. This ends up with, actually equates to a 15,000-gallon tank, two-compartment tank. And then it flows into a pump chamber where it pressure-doses the system, which does a couple of things. It makes sure that the effluent is dispersed evenly throughout the system, so that it's not all concentrated in one place, right? When you have a septic system, a lot of the way that these, the effluent gets treated is through the microbes and the biology in the soil. If you concentrate that all in one location, it's not as effective. So, this makes sure it's evenly dispersed, and the drip right system that we're proposing to use for this offers an additional benefit for treatment as well.
And that also is going to require approval from the Board of Health.
That is correct, yes.
Which if that doesn't happen, then it wouldn't go, so.
It does, and to that end, I do know that the Board of Health has also brought in an outside independent third-party consultant to review that with them. So, there's a lot of oversight over the septic system, and as part of an alternative approval or an approval for anything between 2,000 and 10,000 gallons a day, there is a required ongoing operations and maintenance plan that is, again, recorded against the deed.
I hope that answers a lot of questions that may come up from the public.
Sure.
Yes, go ahead, Peter.
On the, talking about the septic tank, and that's going to be pumped to another tank. My question is, as far as electrical backup, if there's a power failure, is there any type of generator or some type of quick connector, temporary generator could be brought in?
Sure, sure. They are definitely equipped, the control panels are equipped with a plug-in for a temporary generator, so that is definitely something that can be done, yes. Yes. We're in discussion now internally about whether it would be permanent, you know, a permanent generator or something that we could be, you know, temporary and movable. One of the issues that we have is with space, right, on the shoulder of the road, where we're trying not to clear the entire site here. But to your point, there is a plug-in on that control panel that we can fire up a generator if there's an issue.
Well, one of the comments we've gotten is, power goes out in this neighborhood a lot. Every homeowner that's called me discusses power going out.
Sure. Which is obviously, you know, a utility company, a utility provider issue, but having the back, the ability to back up is important. And I should also note that the way these tanks are designed in series, they're required to be designed with a minimum of a 24-hour storage in the tank before you even need to activate a generator. Only point being that that gives, if the power goes out for any length of time, you have 24 hours to mobilize and get a generator there before you have any kind of an issue. So, that's.
Well, like I said, either a generator on-site all the time, but then you have to have propane there to maintain it. That has to run once a week.
Something else to consider in this particular development is that these houses will be serviced by wells, which if the power goes out, those don't work either, and therefore the flow out of the dwellings ceases to go to the septic system, so.
However, each house could have a generator.
Yeah, they could.
If I had a well, I'd put a generator.
If individual houses have generators, then we've got a different situation.
But is that part of your consideration in the?
That's part of the consideration, yeah. And the good thing is, the way these, the pump chambers are designed, you design the pump to run for about 10 minutes at a time, so it doesn't take a ton of gas from a portable generator to activate that and run that pump for 10 minutes. So, I think a portable generator is a perfectly fine option in a case like this.
Okay, no.
Yeah, sure.
Anything else, Paul?
I had one more question. I know there was discussion about the trash. That's all going to be done privately.
All going to be done privately, yes.
So, the question was, I forget who brought it up, was the fact that some people would be bringing their trash barrels all the way down to the end of the street from their driveway.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, on trash day, you could have like 10 or 15 barrels, but, which is no concern to people that are outside of the neighborhood, so if they're comfortable with that, I'm fine with that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And as far as I see this whole unit, is that the town of Stoughton is basically only going to be responsible for like safety, police, and fire, basically, right?
That's really it, public services. Everything else is going to be private.
Yeah.
They, you know, they will, the homeowners association will maintain their own roadways, things like that. So, there's really very, very little demand placed on the town. And, you know, one thing to note too, is that this is the nature of these passive homes, which we talked about. This is going to be the, well, should you folks approve it, the first passive home community in the country, which is really kind of an exciting thing, and it brings a different type of market and exclusivity to this, which equates to taxed dollars, property values raising, things like that. So, it really is a lot of benefit here to the town.
Actually, so when you say passive, are these homes going to have solar power panels?
And Michael De La Fave, who's on the call, is the architect. He can probably speak to that better than I can, but my understanding is that they have the option to.
So, Mike De La Fave, Rody Architects, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thanks for letting me speak. So, yeah, these are passive homes. So, as part of the certification process, so these are going to be certified homes by FIES, which is the Passive House Institute of the United States. There is a renewable energy component as part of the certification process. So, not only will they be solar-ready, they will likely all have solar panels on them. And the homes that we've completed in the past were required to be solar-ready, but the homeowners went right ahead and put the solar panels on them in order to, you know, have that cost benefit on these homes. So, yeah, we expect solar panels on most.
Michael, I believe they're kind of getting hung up on passive as being solar. My understanding in, for the, this project's been going on from subdivision to this to that, is that the design is extremely, you know, it surpasses by a magnitude of 10 or 20 of anything in the building code for the stretch code for energy efficiency. You've designed these roof lines that shade the, you know, provide shade over the windows in the summer and allows sunlight in the winter. That's what you really mean by passive homes, correct?
That's exactly what I mean. So, the passive house is a certifying body in a method of high-performance building. So, what we're really providing here is like sort of beyond just the notion of having a green home or an energy-efficient home. These are high-performance homes. They're extremely airtight, have wonderful characteristics of great fresh air, filter systems, energy recovery units, and they are essentially, especially in the wintertime, powered by the sun. So, we accept as much of the sun into the buildings as we can, and then we harness that energy and redistribute it throughout the homes to heat, to heat the homes in the wintertime. So, we actually sort of expect really sort of no kind of heating costs actually having to come out of these homes, because we use the power of the sun. And then, yes, we, these are all individually, digitally energy modeled, and then that goes through a process with the certifying body. And each home is sort of optimized for its location on the sites, and those, that optimization goes into solar shading, overhangs, the U-value of each of the windows, the R-value of the skin and the roof. So, again, yeah, thank you for kind of pointing that out. These are extremely high performance, and I think that's, one of the really exciting aspects of this is that there's not another community like this that, at least we know of, in New England or in the United States right now, that is trying to do what we're trying to do.
Yeah, essentially passive means that very, very little energy cost.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else on board have any questions?
Well, just to emphasize again on what you both said there, like he said, the houses are going to be situated so that they optimize exactly the way the sun rises and sets, and the angles it comes from winter to summer, so, which is really nice. It's not like, what usually happens is somebody buys a house today, and they figure out, oh, that's nice, this window gets the winter sunlight all the time. These are going to be designed and set so that they get that. It just is there.
And one of the other things in the design that we've seen, we, most developers come in and they clear-cut and grade everything. They are literally being methodical on where they want to put this, based on, based on our grading plans and stuff. So, that portion will be interesting. Other than that, I think.
Good. Does anybody from the public have anything they want to say, comments, statements? Come on up to the table, please, and introduce yourself.
Hi. Hi. Is that close enough?
You're on, you're good.
Okay. My name is Don Cox at One Phoenix Lane. So, again, thank you guys for taking the time. I won't go too much into the letter. Just to kind of give you guys some information, the letter that I wrote was actually a community effort by a lot of the other neighbors as well that we brought in. I just kind of put it together for everybody. So, I won't kind of, I'll just kind of hit on some of those points and, you know, kind of go about that, but if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. But, you know, one of the big concerns is blasting, particularly with that six-foot ledge wall as, with entrance to the site, particularly where in this neighborhood we have, everyone's on well water. There is one of the abutters at One Eagle Rock has structures really close to that, where that entrance is going to be, and it's definitely a big concern. You know, taking a look at the septic, you know, it's good to hear that we'll be looking to have that kind of really laid out before going anywhere. I think one of the things that maybe didn't come across well in the letter is one of the things we're looking at is the location of the wells on the site.
Just pick up a little.
Just pick up a little bit, please.
Sir, I'm trying not to shout too loud.
No, you just shout. This place is lousy for energy.
Okay. So what we can do, what we're looking at with regards to the wells is just the mapping of the wells on the site, on the plan. One of the things that we're concerned with is just making sure that this site can handle the number of wells relative to where the septic and where the structures are going to be, particularly with all the ledge that is on there, you know. Talking about the septic system as well and the tanks, you know, they mentioned bringing in a generator. One of the concerns with a portable generator is who exactly is going to roll that out, fire it up, run it during a storm and then shut it back down versus a permanent generator, you know. Bill mentioned that the residents, all of us can tell you that when the power goes out, it goes out often, and it goes out for an extended period of time when it does go out. When I moved into my house, I had exactly three hours before power went out the first time, and it was out for about three days. So it's something that is definitely a concern, particularly with this type of septic system that's going to rely on power to continue to function that system. You know, water might not be coming out the same whether a person has a generator or not, but people are smart. When you're stuck in a house during a storm, after the first time, you know, you fill up the bathtub, you have buckets going, you have a way to flush your toilet when you need to because otherwise it's pretty miserable. With the utilities, again, our concern is, you know, just what kind of construction is going to be done to get those utilities to the site? I'm hearing it's only going to be electrical. But again, that's not really in that area. It's one of the challenges with that particular road. The utilities don't go far up Phoenix Lane, and they don't go far up Eagle Rock. They kind of just stop, and there's no connection in that particular corner. With the runoff, you know, again, there's a huge water issue on Phoenix Lane, particularly with the two fishbowls that collect water as they fill up, particularly during the winter or in the spring. That water ends up making a river going down the road. The DPW is coming out there a lot during the wintertime just to scrape ice as the road expands, as that ice sheet expands from the side of the road all the way across. It will then form down along Bay Road, and there's been a number of accidents in that S-curve because of that. We want to make sure we're not adding to that particular issue. You know, developer, I talked about providing draft of that HOA agreement to address some of the board's concerns back in October, and that's something people are looking to see, particularly around things like trash when, you know, they were talking about rolling all the barrels down to the corner. You know, anyone one of us with kids knows, one of the big challenges is getting them to bring those barrels back up. And just things like that so that we can kind of get that comfort level.
And I appreciate that. I think you've got a really good letter, and I think they've said they will respond to all of those items, so I think that really helps out, so thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for bringing it up. Thank you very much.
Have you inquired to the electric company why the power goes out so often and for so long down there?
Uh, yeah, so Stoughton, that part of Stoughton, that neighborhood is on two different grids. There is the part by Cleary that's on the eastern grid, and there's the part that most of the neighborhood is in that's on the Stoughton side of the grid. All power comes off of Bay Road. So if a tree goes down, we're at the end of the line, and you're just waiting with everybody else, and it's just number of people, you know. Gibbons District, where there's the shelter, gets priority, things like that, and we're just kind of further down. So, you know, I use FM generator from, I have a whole-house generator, and, you know, every time the technicians come out, they tell us that our neighborhood has the largest runtimes of anybody in this particular area, Wallpole, Canton, Stoughton.
I'll never understand that grid. I'm in North Stoughton, and I'm on the grid that comes out of Bridgewater.
Exactly. It has nothing to do with the town, but where that neighborhood's on the end of two different grids. And that's kind of what drives that.
Thank you.
Questions? All right, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I'm assuming you're going to ask for a continuance.
Yes.
We're going to need a.
Yeah, Eric and I were just discussing, I think, looking at June 26.
I think that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, if you, the 12th means that Craig and I need it probably by about Tuesday, and that won't happen.
And the 26th should, you know, hopefully give us more time to coordinate with the Board of Health and submit that formally, things like that. I do anticipate having that submitted formally probably next week. So that'll, I think the 26th is.
Can I have a motion to accept his continuance request?
Form eight, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. Craig, Bill, thank you.
Item number eight, new public hearing on case file number SP 25-008 and special permit case file SP 25-003. Public hearing will be held in the petition of applicant, property owner Catherine J. Texiera and Robert Dedson, 27 Whitman Street, Bridgewater, Mass. Request a site plan review under sections 10.6 to construct a three-story, 52,515-square-foot mixed-use building consisting of 43 apartments and 1,220 square feet of retail space with parking, landscaping, drainage and other site improvements. The special permit request is per section 3.1.4.8.10 to allow for a mixed-use building in the general business zoning district and allow for a parking waiver per section 6.1.9. The property is located at 576 Pleasant Street, assessive map 68, lot 188, in the general business GB zoning district. Can I have whoever is going to represent, come on up.
Eric, which, which plan do you want up?
Uh, yeah, let's pull up the site plan, and if we can, let's start with the existing conditions plan sheet, C1. That's a good one, you're not on. For the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer, Strong Point Engineering Solutions here tonight representing the project at 576 Pleasant. With me, Anthony O., let you introduce you.
Anthony, Recido Corvo Companies, Fort Porter Street, Stoughton.
And also with us in the audience tonight is Tony Donato, who is the architect on the project. We asked him to come just in the event the board is interested in discussing architecture tonight. I'll, I'll keep this somewhat brief. I know that we have a lot of people here who want to speak tonight. We have submitted the application for site plan review and special permits. We do have comments from the engineering and planning department that we will go through. But just to walk through this briefly, so the site is located at 576 Pleasant Street. It is about an acre and a half in size. It is completely located within the general business district. It currently houses a residence, a residential dwelling along Pleasant Street, and then there's a large barn kind of midway through the site, and that area is used for storage. So to some degree, the site is at least utilized as a mixed-use. The site is high and dry, meaning that there is no wetlands on this site, so we're not before the Conservation Commission with a notice of intent, which is somewhat atypical these days. The proposal, where did Bill go? I'm missing my layout sheet. The proposal is as shown on this sheet. It is to, what we're proposing is a mixed-use building, three stories with parking beneath on the ground floor, something that this board has seen in the past. The mixed-use building is going to have a commercial component for an under, not yet determined commercial use of about 1,200 square feet, and we're proposing 43 residential units split between 25 one-bedroom units and 18 two-bedroom units. The special permits that were discussed in the introduction are for the use within a general business district. The mixed use is allowed by special permit. And the other is for a reduction in parking beyond what the zoning bylaw requires. So I don't think it's a secret that there's a notion that some of the zoning bylaw parking requirements in town sort of lead to being overparked. And when we had the prefile meeting, we did discuss a potential reduction in parking, which I believe staff supported at the time, and I'm sure they still do. And it's based on our experience with this business model. What we're basically, with the parking count, we're required under the bylaw to have 108 parking spaces. What we've proposed is 82, and what that works out to is one space per every bedroom in the building, and then an additional 21 spaces to service the retail and any overflow parking that may be, need to be utilized at any time. So we believe that we have plenty of parking on-site proposed based on our experience with exactly this model. And the benefit of reducing the parking is, one, it increases green space along Pleasant Street. You'll see that sort of, we have a longer driveway in with green space and landscaping on both sides. It helps soften the approach. If we were not granted that waiver, we would not be able to do that. And it also reduces impervious surface, which helps us to control stormwater runoff better. It's just kind of a smart planning decision based on our, you know, proven data for this particular program. Moving through the plan set, if we can just scroll to the next sheet, the, the site is graded to blend into the surroundings. We do have a couple of very, I won't say very, but short retaining walls proposed along the western side of the property boundary. And the, on the southern portion of the site, we are on the higher side of that wall, and on the northern portion site, we would be on the lower side of that wall. Those walls are designed to be four-foot maximum height, and they will likely be modular block wall. Stormwater control is all subsurface on this site. We fortunately do have good soils out there. We did soil test pits throughout the site that were witnessed by agents of the town. We do show a reduction in runoff and an increase in groundwater recharge throughout the site based on our calculations. In addition to that, we will be serviced by municipal sewer and water that is available in Pleasant Street. We provided a full lighting plan that meets the requirements of the town. It is dark sky compliant. It is showing zero-foot candles at the property boundary, so we're not lighting up the neighbors, we're not lighting up the sky. We have provided a somewhat robust, I would say, landscaping plan, really designed to kind of soften that approach along Pleasant Street like we talked about with the green space. And really that, those are the finer points of it. We are, as I mentioned, we do have comments from the engineering and planning department. There's nothing in there that we see as a concern, all things that we can address, largely requests for additional information, some detail here and there, things like that. I do have, as I mentioned, our project architect with us tonight, if the board would like to discuss architecture. Otherwise, like I said, I'll keep it brief and turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Bill, or Craig, either one of you is going to go first, and then we can kind of go from there.
Okay, thank you. A lot of minor technical about, you know, parking schedule, the lighting plan, doesn't have the cut sheets of the wall mounts. I'm making recommendations that the landscape plan needs to be revised to provide more canopy trees along the parking area. Also, I'll go to the, go to the landscape plan. The parking lot right here, where there is a retaining wall, on the upside of the retaining wall, more vegetation. I believe screening should be as appropriate for screening of headlights, even though this area is kind of the back of one property. However, along the front portion, there's a slope from, you know, that goes up towards the driveway. This slope right here should be planted with an evergreen screen in this area to screen from the existing residents that's adjacent. Those are some of my comments on that. Let's see. The dumpster enclosure didn't provide a detail on materials and colors. Normally, we require, like the project before on Morton Street, they had a base course of stone that they were using. I believe that this does not have, this, this design is more, does not have that. It's more of a faux-type wood material. So in that case, I would recommend that the dumpster enclosure be a decorative split-face block that is a color that's compatible, not using, to not use a vinyl fence, because these are, you know.
Either that or he could use a cement block with the, and use the same siding around over the cement block. He could do the same thing.
Yeah, but the siding that they have on there is really not, there's no brick, so, but it's something that they can, they can propose. I believe that it's providing a much more decorative thing than just a vinyl fence. The other thing is, is it sufficient size to accommodate trash and recycling? So those are my comments, and then I'll turn it over to Craig.
One second, the architect wanted to speak for a second. Could you come up and state your name and who you are, please?
Sure.
You got to come up to the microphone, I'm sorry.
I'm Antonio Donato with AD Architect, and I just wanted to comment on some of the materials, which we have not nailed down yet, but we are showing a base of brick right now on the building. It's hard to tell, it's not labeled, yeah. What the board, what I recommend, I've been, since I've been here, is, I'm getting away, just getting away from these white vinyl dumpster enclosures that everyone sees around town that after about one season it gets hit, and then we're constantly, you know, on all commercial, multi-family projects, we want these things, like if you look at the dumpster enclosure in the new Chase Bank, you know, it's similar brick material that they use a lot. So whatever you're using as your base coat, brick, do a CMU and then sheet it in that, so when you drive up, you see the same brick color that you're using as your base coat.
Yep, absolutely. Yes, we can coordinate that.
Go ahead, Craig.
Thank you. We reviewed the plans for, you know, technical engineering issues. We provided our technical review comment letter to the applicant and the board. The drainage design meets all the DEP stormwater management requirements. I do have an issue with the trench drain that's proposed across the front entrance. I'd rather see catch basins in that location. I know there's elevation challenges that need to be overcome to get that in there, but I think there's something you can do. Not all of the infiltration basins have a test pit within their footprint, so we'll have to get back out there and get them within the footprint of the basins as required by stormwater management regs.
If I may, just to that point, you're absolutely right, they don't. What we found, obviously when you do test pits, you don't always know where things are going to be sited. Soil conditions were very consistent throughout, so we feel very comfortable with the design. If it's possible to do those confirmatorily as a condition of approval, that'd be great. If not, we'll deal with it.
I think that's appropriate. There's a, they need an oil-water separator for floor drains for the underground parking that'll need to discharge to the sewer. One issue that I do have with the stormwater design and the site grading is that the property to the west is at a higher elevation and is pitching towards this property. Now, you're raising the grade, putting some walls and slopes along that property line, and I don't want to see a ponding issue with the abutting property, so we need to make sure that that's not going to occur.
Sure. We actually did take a look at that, and I think what would be appropriate is if I expand the view so you can see more topography. It's not a huge area that looks like it's draining this way when we kind of zero in, and that's the reason why we have that kind of off-pavement catch basin to redirect that to where it's naturally going now, but definitely something that we can expand on.
All right. I know that a traffic impact report is forthcoming, so we'd like to see what is expected to come out of the development, what the trips are and so forth. The area's really congested. The area is really congested currently. There's a light not too far from this location, so these roads are backed up often. So we'll see what your traffic engineer looks to do to, to address any of those concerns. And then, we didn't receive comments from the water superintendent, but I know for previous proposals in this area that there is a low water pressure issue in this area, and that, I don't know if you've done any flow testing or seen what that's going to do for the service of fire protection and domestic water supply for this particular...
Right, yes. We're, we are aware, we're looking into that flow testing and with our MEP engineers now. It's possible, depending on the results of the flow testing, we may need booster pumps in the building or something like that for fire protection, but we are working that up.
Okay. That's...
Couple of comments I would like to make, and I am going to read a couple of things here, just so some people have some context of what's been presented to us and what some other people have said. Strong Point Engineering has presented a couple of items that they, that will be coming. One, as Craig had said earlier, we are getting a traffic impact assessment that is coming from an independent study. We have not received that yet, so it's not been reviewed, so we don't have any answers as far as that goes. Visual impact assessment, they say is a proposed, the proposed project is located in general business district, includes the construction of a three-story mixed-use building and is permissible under special permit from the planning board. The project is abutted by residential use to the east, vacant land and general business to the north, and hodge terrace and approved but unconstructed way to the east. The building has been designed with a modern aesthetic similar to the character of other such buildings and have been approved by the town under similar conditions. A special permit to reduce the number of parking stalls required under the zoning bylaw has also been requested. Granting the special permit will reduce the amount of impervious surface required to provide enhanced vegetation buffering between Pleasant Street and the proposed building, as well as abutters on each side. The proposed parking area meets the requirements for interior landscaping, given the zoning bylaw. At the request of the board, the dumpster enclosure will be coordinated with the facade of the building and further screened from the main area and traveled via the landscaping. Based on the above, it is the opinion of this office, meaning Strong Point's office, that the project has been developed in such a way as to limit adversarial impact in the maximum extent possible. Environmental impact assessment, there are known wetland resource areas located in the proximity of the project site, nor is the project site located within any known critical area as defined in the Massachusetts stormwater standards. The site is proposed to include stormwater management system that is fully compliant with those standards and will be served by municipal water and sewer located on Pleasant Street. As such, as anticipated, the proposed project will have no adverse environmental impacts. Economic impact assessment, the project consists of 43 residential units and 1,120 square feet of retail component. This will provide additional tax revenue to the town without including any significant burden to the town resources such as emergency services. The proposed project will utilize municipal water and sewer services, which will generate increased revenue for the town without overburdening those systems. The applicant currently owns similar facilities in the town of Stoughton, which place very little demand in the public school system as anticipated here. Based on the above, it is not anticipated the proposed project will have any adverse economic impact to the town of Stoughton. Community impact, community impact assessment, the proposed project will be located along Pleasant Street in the general business district, having property that is highly imperfectionally maintained as a proven way to support property values in an immediate surrounding areas. The project is not anticipated to result in significant pedestrian congestion to the surrounding neighborhood, but will provide housing and services for a diverse demographic and neighborhood in the town at large. The project has been designed to fit the community to the maximum extent practicable in the ways and noted above, and is not anticipated to have any adverse impact on the community. So that's the applicant's engineering impact as far as the statements that are required by the planning board and areas that we review and require information on. There has been a couple of emails sent to our office from abutters. One is from Helena, I guess it's Helena Morales Photography. Objection to the proposed construction 576 Pleasant Street. Dear Stoughton Planning Board, we are writing to express our concern and opposition regarding the proposed construction of 576 Pleasant Street. We reside at 546 Pleasant Street, Stoughton, and deeply value the green landscape, nature, and privacy of our property. We are not in favor of any construction that may interfere with the urban character, natural surrounding, or tranquility of our home. Unfortunately, we are unable to attend the public hearing in person, but we kindly ask that your concerns are formally acknowledged and considered. We respectfully ask the board to consider the potential impact this development may have on neighboring properties like ours. Sincerely, Adelson Morales, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing that name and property, and Helena Morales. One other is from Eugene McKenna. Dear members regarding the apartment building at 576 Pleasant Street, living in Camelot, living at Camelot Court, we are very concerned about this plan, a lot of traffic now and more on the way. Please consider this, your decision, please consider this in your decision. Eugene and Christine McKenna, 10 Camelot Court, Stoughton, Mass. That being said, I would like to know if any of the board members have any questions at this time.
I have one question about hodge terr... Hodge terrace. I don't, I don't see on any of the drawings whether there's fencing running along there, or, and what's, what's the potential of people parking on hodge terrace and walking over to the apartment complex?
So if I may, through the chairman, currently hodge terrace is in approved but unconstructed way. So there really is nowhere to park there currently, that may change someday. That is the reason why we haven't proposed to put a physical barrier there at this time. Certainly, as my client owns and maintains the project, the property, if that changes, he may at that time choose to put some sort of physical barrier there.
So is there, is there something there that would prevent people from pulling a car in there and parking there?
It's a dirt site, it's kind of an overgrown site, not...
It's all, it's all, okay.
There's like a dirt, like a gravel driveway there, but it's used by the residents that live on the other side now, basically.
Just not in the area, you're not going to go in there and park to go to a park.
I mean, the way it looks on here is, you know, people could park right there.
It's like the dead ends around where we are. They're all private, all, you know, they're paper streets.
Oh, good, okay.
Well, I'm letting you know, for the, I don't know why, I can't share this screen on the Zoom, but the parcel that's in, being discussed is the one that's highlighted here. I know that the 12 or 14 acres back here has also been subject to various different things. It's, this is what's called a paper street, it's never been constructed. So if you see, it's all, it's all wooded and...
Okay.
All right, anybody else on the board?
On that same note, when I threw it into Google Maps, it says Pleasant Ave. Is that the same street?
It is.
Yeah, it's, if I... When they did the subdivision, they actually named the street, but every, but the driveway splitting these properties, I think the number 10 has been called Pleasant, you may...
That, that is right. We actually did the subdivision on that as well. Historically, it's actually had two different names, but most recently, that little private way was called Pleasant Ave. At the time that the subdivision that expanded that came through, there's a requirement that it, that any new street was to be named after a veteran from the town, which is when it became hodge terrace. So it is the same, it's just Google hasn't caught up to it yet.
Same but different.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, what I noticed is, it's not designated as a private way.
I'm sorry?
It is not designated as a private way.
Well, because it's a paper street.
Because it's un, it's unconstructed and it's a paper street at this point.
The, on our GIS system, only streets that are constructed that are private are listed as private ways. Everything else are, any, any street that's on a plat that's recorded but not constructed is considered a paper street, and, and, you know, it doesn't show up as private, because it's a, it's just a paper street. It only exists on paper.
Bill, can you give me some perspective where this is exactly? I went online at home and I couldn't figure out exactly where it is on Pleasant Street.
Well, here's, up here is Pine, Pine Street?
Yeah.
I believe there's a project, Dog Park, right here, Cape and Rentals.
Throw the rock.
So that's Cape and Rentals, and if you come down, it's right, not very far from...
A commercial building we proved there a couple of years ago.
Yeah, there's Robert Street right across the street.
It's sort of...
Central Street, so it's basically between Pine, halfway between Pine and Central is down here. This is Central Street.
Okay.
Right here, and then this is the property.
All right.
If I may...
Here, let me take the, let me do this.
Kelly's property is right next to it, so the dead end he's talking about is Kelly's property.
Okay.
Paul, is this helpful? I've taken the thing off.
He knows where, he knows where it is. He knows where it is now.
I know where it is now, because I thought it was Kelly's property.
But it's the one next to Kelly.
Kelly's property, miss, are these?
Right there, cul-de-sac on the...
Let me...
Yeah.
Right there.
And the neighbors and the folks that are here are probably familiar with several proposals on this. That's not discussed.
Okay.
That's Mr. Kelly's property, and this is the...
And not this Kelly. I got the same thing with my people.
That's important to know.
Okay, anybody else on the board?
Well, I mean...
Go ahead, Richard.
Richard Terry, considering the number of people here regarding this property, I would like to suggest the board open it up to public comment.
I wasn't going to do that, but I wanted the board to be able to talk first, and then I was going to open up to public comment. That was my point. Anything else?
Going back to that side street there, would not, if they were to flip their building, could they use that as an exit?
No, they can't. There's a, there's a reserved strip along the line.
All right. Okay. So at this point in time, I would like to open up to anybody who would like to speak. Please, you're going to need to come up to the table, state your name and your address. And as I said at the beginning of the meeting, I'll give you up to five minutes to speak and only one time per coming up. So please make your point as, as you're coming up here, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
And speak closely and clearly into the microphone, and...
Absolutely.
You, you are as loud as I am, Juan, that's good. And state your name, so, our recording secretary, thank you.
Juan Fox, 624 Pleasant Street, I'm an abutter. I want to talk about three things on this. Water pressure, traffic, and zoning. Water pressure is a problem along Pleasant Street. Everybody behind me will probably atta, will attest to that. We all have to make water choices to do anything. I have to take, I have to, you know, I can't take a shower when I'm watering my lawn. I can't wash my clothes when I'm washing my dishes, okay? And people further up the hill can't put up a second floor bathroom. It's low water pressure. And this building is going to have 43 units, 43 bathrooms, that are going to have taken showers in the morning and flushing toilets in the evening. And it's connected to the same line we all are on. And there is no way that what they're doing is not going to impact our water pressure. And if somebody wants to fix that, then we're talking about the town spending a lot of money to do that. Traffic. Traffic is atrocious on Pleasant Street. Anybody who drives there understands that, and is a, is a problem that starts at 2:30 and goes to 6:00, and has the traffic backed up from Central to Pine Street. That's like a half mile, and that's every day, every evening, every afternoon. Now, this apartment will be emptying out right in the middle of that scrum, and people are going to be turning into that through that scrum. And 43 units could have 86 cars going in and out of there. It's something that is, and it's going to be a stop sign there, there's going to be no light, you can't have a light there. It's too close to Central Street. And even if that, it's already jam-packed, right now, right now it's jam-packed. And to add that right in the middle of it is going to make it even worse. And for zoning, it's GB, general business, and it seems to me with a permit on here, it sounds like it's going to be spot zoning. This is a multi-resident building with just 1,200 square feet for, for business or stores, whatever. That's like a small amount of that, it's like a fig leaf for that to, to say that's a mixed use. And it certainly looks like a spot, spot use which a town planner is trying very hard to rectify in town. In town meeting, there's always coming up with fixes for that. So, water pressure, traffic, zoning. This is not a very good project for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
L.A. Hanson, I live at 576 Pleasant Street, so I know it quite well. I will be moving out of there if this gets approved, but I probably move out anyway, trying to find elderly housing. But what I'd like to talk about, in addition to his reference to the water pressure and the traffic, every day, when I have to leave my driveway, I have to wait for an opening in the traffic. And when I was coming in, I always have to wait. And one time, my car was totaled at that spot, at 5, not quite 576, it was 585 or something like that. Turning into Pleasant Ave, which in fact is a street, there is people living, one, one family living on 10 Pleasant Ave, which I used to own. The, the idea of building an apartment building with 43 units, every, every house, all Pleasant Street are single-family houses. With the exception of way down near Jimmy's store, there's an apartment, a small apartment building, and there's Pleasant Gardens up the street a bit on Pleasant Street. I don't, I don't remember the numbers. But from then on, all the way up is single-family. And to put an apartment building on a piece of land that's a tad over an acre, without any parking spaces, I can tell you what's going to be happening is not only is the traffic going to be a problem, it's going to be way out of character for the neighborhood. And even if I'm moving, which I will be, I owe it to the people that live next to me to speak against this. Now, the, it's just, it's unfair to the people that live in the neighborhood to have single-family, single-family, apartment with 43 units, and having a retail establishment down the bottom. You're going to, what you're going to have, and you're, now you're also making less tra, less parking spaces than normally is required. You've got 43 units, you're going to, most every unit is going to have two cars. If it's two-bedroom, you're going to have two cars, possibly more. And what's going to happen is they're going to be parking on the street, or parking in the area that's on Pleasant Ave that's going to be, and that's going to be a problem for the neighbors. Traffic is always going to problem, you've got the exhaust blowing into people's houses. I think, I think it is, it would, it's unfair to the people that live in that neighborhood, my neighborhood now. And so, I, I think there's, if you want to put a duplex in there, that would be fine. But an apartment with, apartment complex with 43 units, it's unfair, it really is. I owe it to my neighbors to speak out against it, even if they're not going to be my neighbors for very long. But even as, as a representative in this precinct and as a resident in this precinct, it's, it's just not a... just not a good use, not fair. Please consider that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
If you've got any questions, I'm glad to answer.
I'm also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn your microphone on, please. Thank you.
Better now? Jim Tisharo, 608 Pleasant Street, live in a butter. Just like Elliot and Juan said, this project does not fit in the neighborhood. You're putting a big apartment building on an acre and a half. It doesn't work for the neighborhood with the traffic and the water pressure, all single-family homes, putting this big apartment building there. It's not going to work out. It's not a good idea for the town of Stoughton. People have lived there for a long time, all single-family homes, and then you're putting a big apartment building. It's not a good project.
Thank you.
Gentlemen of the board and audience...
Your microphone's going to be green. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, audience, my name is Jason Matasio. Been in the town since 1989. Now, I could echo everything that the gentleman before me stated, which is...
State your address, please.
A 715 Central, which is probably the busiest intersection of the town of Stoughton. My family bought in 1989, and we're going back to when Pleasant Street and Central were busy, but not this busy. The gentleman prior to me heard the last name Hanson, which brought me back to the little variety store as a kid I'd go to, Hanson's. And I could go through those woods and cut to the North School, which later became the Daw', which was great. Small, residential, friends all in that area. We could go down Memory Lane, but it's not about that. It's about the community. Now, yes, Pleasant Street is crazy, Central Street is crazy, but the neighbors are close and we're friendly. You add this large building there, you're really throwing a lot of disruption in the town. Again, we can echo the traffic. We can echo the water pressure, which is terrible. No one's mentioning... We have enough police and fire trucks that go by enough as is. I can only imagine the amount of calls that might go to that apartment complex. When you build apartments like that, you bring in all types of community, and we don't know what's going to happen to the town with it. I think the best thing to do would be leave it alone. The gentleman before said, a duplex, sure, maybe a couple houses, the land's there. But why tear down those woods? Why build there? It's not ideal. The location doesn't... It doesn't make sense. It's residential. Yes, we're commercial zoned, but we're not commercial treated. They also mentioned putting a commercial place in there, another Dunkin' Donuts, a dry cleaner. I don't know, but it just sounds like more traffic. It sounds like more chaos. I can appreciate the architecture design. It's beautiful, guys, but I think it's best not to be in that part of town. Again, everyone, thank you for your time, and I hope you have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Caroline DeJesus. I live at 49 Sunrise Terrace. It's right off of Old Maple Street, so right off of Pleasant. I literally, I would say, in regards to everything else going on that everyone has stated, I've been in that neighborhood for now, I'm going on to six years, and I already hear from the police and all of that, like, I hear it constantly, right? I also have a little one now. I'm constantly walking the neighborhood. We don't have sidewalks that connect. So, if you have a project like this with less parking, usually when you give that waiver, you're trying to achieve maybe more people walking to local buses, train stations, areas like that. This is a 30-minute walk for those who... I drive and I walk, but it's a 30-minute walk to the commuter rail station. It's probably a 25-minute walk to the Bat Bus. So, when you're eliminating the parking, now I see, along with people not walking, is they're parking onto our streets, Old Maple Street, if you go through Old Maple Street. If you have people parking along that street and then Sunrise Terrace, it's already narrow. We have UPS trucks, we're trying to slide by, there's people's rocks in the way, whatever it is. But, you know, having this development of 43 units, I could just imagine the amount of cars is... It's not enough. You know, I've done construction, I understand the perspective of the developer and what they're trying to achieve. But as a resident, I don't want to see the traffic. I've already seen almost getting hit trying to just cross the street on Pleasant Street, just trying to get to a safe section on the sidewalk, on a bike, walking, you know, the traffic, the, you know, the applicant also stated about the taxes, right? We're only going to be receiving taxes on one building, not 43 units. If we have a duplex or something like that, you're going to be receiving two separate taxes, not just taxes on one building. So, you know, I'm not going to reiterate everyone else's concerns over traffic and all that, because we have a long list of that. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jack Nolan. I live on 591 Pleasant Street. I'm more than in a butter. I'm right across the street. Yeah, I see 43 apartments and 1,220 square feet retail. So, I basically... My father passed away about 12 years ago, so I'm taking care of my mother. And it seems for 12 years, I don't know, I've seen you guys, this, one of these guys looks familiar. This is like the third time we fought that an apartment, three stories, one was almost going to be five stories or something like that, coming down there fighting this. And it's good to see all the neighbors that are here, and hopefully they're going to stay here and fight this all the way to the end. Yeah, this sticks out like a sore thumb, which would be nice is if nobody wants to leave beautiful trees in a forest that's back there and trails, then what I think... And I know it's just a little spot here that we're talking about, okay? Then what I would suggest is just have it a family home, fix up the home or something like that. That fits in to this neighborhood. Have it to fit into the neighborhood, because this does not fit into the neighborhood. And like I said, this is like the third... In the 12 years, this is the third project, you know? It's been, you know, I have duties at home, you know? All these people do. And this is just crazy, but, you know, I'm here for the fight for this, and I thank you for your time and your service here on the board, and I hope you guys will kill this project, and I hope that they maybe build like a family home, something that fits into this neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Robin Courier, 566 Pleasant Street.
Pull it to you, move... Pull the bike. Pull the whole base, like, bring it up close like this. There you go. Thank you.
Robin Courier, 566 Pleasant Street. I live next door to Elliot. I oppose the project, but I don't really have anything to add other than what the neighbors have already added, but I do have a letter from a neighbor that could not attend that she asked me to submit.
Thank you. Do you want me to read it, Bill? So, they'd ask us to read this into the record. I'm going to read this in. Dear Planning Board members, my name is Lauren Conti, and I live on Oakland Street. I am writing to express my opposition to the proposed 43-unit apartment building and retail space at 576 Pleasant Street. The residents living in the area of Pleasant Street and Central Streets already deal with heavy traffic, not only during typical rush hours, but during throughout much of the day, especially on weekends. I'm concerned with the burden this could pose with the town's infrastructure, specifically the Daw' school and our water system. We are already dealing with costly issues surrounding the elementary schools. We do not need to overburden another neighborhood school and face potential need to expand the school in the future. Regarding the water system, we've been warned that the pipes that supply our town's water are in desperate need of repair and or replacement. What would in addition to 43 units do to the already weakened system? The notice of public hearing isn't specific about what type of dwellings will make up the 43 units. Will there be one-bedroom units or more? The differentiation is important as 43 single-bedroom units would typically attract from 43 to 86 residents, whereas it would be impossible to determine the number of tenants two and three-bedroom units would attract. It's become common trend to have multiple generations of families living under one roof. The number of people living together more than offered surpasses the reasonable limits, and it has been my experience with the town's hands are tied when it comes to policing the issue. I live on Oakland Street, where we have three homes subscribing to this trend. This isn't an affront of the residents, however, having up to 20 cars crammed into driveways and along the streets are not only unsightly, but they narrow the roadway and become safety concerns. I know neighbors have verbally addressed this with the town, most recently to report that one neighbor is running a taxi/ride-share business out of their home and house of 20-plus vehicles. I also have to assume that no action has been taken to remedy this situation, as nothing has changed. Finally, I want to address the promises made during the petitioning process versus real outcomes, which can differ. As an example, I will use James Signet Way located at Central Street. This street was developed about 20 years ago, where one family house once sat. There is now a single-family plus two, two-family homes. We have proposed that they would not disseminate the wooded area and the separated property and the abutters on Oakland Street, that 40 feet of woodland buffer would remain. That was not the case. In fact, little more than a single tree, line of trees remained, and the dwelling sitting about 40 to 50 feet from the property line. The Oakland Street backyards were not one... That were once private and quiet now look out into the backs of multifamily homes and are witness to heavy traffic on Central Street and the noise that comes with it. So, honestly, the integrity matter of those of us already living in the area of 576 Pleasant Street, thank you for consideration. Lauren Conti, 77 Oakland Street. Gentlemen, either one of you can start.
Good evening. Steve Hammond, 700 Pleasant Street, Stoughton. Not in a butter, but just down the street. My father-in-law built the house in 1950. My wife talks about sitting out on the stone wall, waiting for a car to come by. Now, you can sit out on the stone wall and have conversations with the cars that are sitting there. I've sat out... I can't... I only... I don't have a turnaround, so I have to back out onto Central, onto Pleasant Street. Fortunately, my neighbor allows me to back into their yard, so I can pull out forward. I've sat there sometimes for as much as 20 minutes, waiting to get out, and the cars coming around the corner from the Pine Street side, heading up to Central Street, doing 50-plus miles an hour, coming down from Central Street, waiting to take a left-hand turn into my driveway. I had a tractor trailer take my side-view mirror off, blasting around me as I was trying to make the turn. So, now you're going to put in 80-odd cars, maybe more, maybe less, taking, doing that same thing, trying to make left-hand turns with cars going around them. If you look at my neighbor's driveway yard, they live up the hill, but they've had people going around us, have taken out their mailbox, going up on their property. So, the traffic is just a mess, and another 80 cars isn't going to help us any. To talk about green space, stormwater, storage areas, from my perspective, are not green space. Take a look at the one down at the corner of Turnpike Street and Pleasant Street, or the one down across from Dunkin' Donuts and Pleasant Street. They're chain-link fenced-in weed storage areas. They don't do anything. They don't look pretty. I've never seen a water storage, stormwater storage area that was well-maintained, and I would have hopes that this might be, but I wouldn't count on it. Water pressure, I've been coming to these things for 20 years, talking about how bad our water pressure is. Every time somebody comes up with a novel idea of putting another 50 to 100 users in our neighborhood, town still hasn't done anything about it over those 20 years. Why should we expect that it's going to get any better? It's going to get worse. That's about all I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, James Dombrowski at 449 Pleasant Street. I'm right at the intersection of Central and Pleasant, so I see some of the worst of the traffic on that road. I just want to echo everyone's concerns about the low water pressure. I have a boost water pressure or boost pump on my house, so we definitely see the low water pressure at the top of the hill, but I kind of want to focus on the zoning for this area, too. So, that property has only 90 square... Or 90 feet of frontage. When you look at if you're building a brand-new house and you have 150 square... Or 150 feet required, that's really to avoid the density that they're trying to put in this area. I see this as them exploiting a loophole on calling this multi-use by throwing in a tiny little resident... Or tiny little retail. So, I really, for the health of that area, I wouldn't want to see them put in 43 units, you know, 60 bedrooms. It's going to drop the water pressure there, and really, the zoning for that area, you just can't support this. Can't support this project, so...
Thank you.
That's about all I have. Thank you.
John Cushman, 560 Pleasant Street. I'm going to butter to this property. I had a bunch of things all listed that I wanted to go over, but they've already been taken care of already. Where they want to change reduced amount of parking spots available is because, first of all, they don't have enough land to put all the parking spots they should have in the first place. Should be 108, they want 82. I looked in the zoning bylaws, you should have two parking spots for each single-bedroom unit and three for each two-bedroom unit. There are no four-bedroom units, so that's okay. So, you need to have the full amount of parking spots available, because people have visitors coming over to see them, and there's not going to be enough parking available. So, where they going to park? Going to park over on Robert Road in the corner, you know, blocking view for somebody trying to get out on Pleasant Street or on Edgewood Ave., or even worse yet, they'll be parking halfway up on a sidewalk, blocking traffic again on a very, very busy road. So, that's one big issue. That's a problem. Another big issue that I heard was mentioned here is, you know, yes, water pressure, that is a big issue. And they had stated for the building, oh, they'll install booster pumps, so they have pressure. Well, booster pumps will make pressure for them, but it's going to suck even more pressure from us. We... There'll be even less pressure than we have now. I heard emergency services, there'll be no impact on that. Well, I see the cops go by all the time, the firefighters go by all the time, going down the hill to yet another facility just like what this one is, and it's a constant problem as well. And I heard Elliot Hanson saying his car got totaled as well, 2014, pulling into my driveway at 560 Pleasant Street. I got rear-ended by someone who wasn't paying attention on that road, and they totaled my car. Pulling out of that driveway, I usually try not to go right to go to Central Street. I'll just try to go left down to Pine Street to get to 138 instead. There's just... The traffic is backed up all the way down to Pine Street, and I've had my directional alarm to get out of the driveway. They still won't let me out, which is ridiculous. Now, you're going to have 43 units in there, and 43 units, they are going to flush the toilet at the same time, and there goes all of our water pressure. So, it's just a... It's a bad place to put this.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak at this time?
My name is Otto Calway. I live on Edgewood Avenue, so I can practically...
Bring it in close to you, please. Bring the microphone in close. Thank you. You had it on. It's on green.
Excuse me. I live practically across the street where the project is going to be built.
There you go.
It was on. I live across the street practically from the project where it's going to be built.
You state your name.
And I have a hard time getting in and out of the...
Could you...
On the street.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you tell us your name, sir?
Otto Calway.
Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Let's move a little closer for you.
Otto Calway.
Thank you.
And I've been living there since 1960, and it was a very peaceful neighborhood. Very few cars going on 139. Wasn't that many cars. Lately, it's backed up from Central Street, past Edgewood Avenue, down past Hanson's. It's backed up, you can't even get out, and nobody wants to let you in. It's backed up, you can't even get out, and nobody wants to let you in. My family, already in my family, had two accidents trying to get in and out of Edgewood Avenue. Those cars that are going, coming in, 43 complexes, they're units, they'll probably have two cars, possibly more, because they'll have visitors and guests, et cetera. So there's going to be a big, big congestion worse than what it is now. Personally, I think the project should be scrapped and just build a home over there, a duplex or whatever, small home for family, because it is a residential area. I don't think it ever was a business area. It's a residential area. I know they tried to make it a business area.
Sir, it is general business zoned in that area.
Pardon?
That property is general business zoned.
I believe it was residential for a longest time. I think it changed.
Maybe, right now, it is, right now, it was general business zoned.
Well, it probably changed. Somebody changed it because of the projects people want to build, it's like whoever it is that wants to build this 43 housing complex. Personally, I think it should scrap and just have it build a house or duplex or whatever, and go from there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Marty Liebman. I'm a resident at 133 Low Avenue, and it's fitting that I, sitting here next to Otto who just, who just left, I'm a new resident, only been here one year, but I would like to let people know here why I am a new resident, why I moved here. I saw this neighborhood and I went, oh, this is a lovely residential neighborhood. And there was a school nearby, and I said, this is perfect. Well, I'd like to just bring to everyone's attention here that this neighborhood truly is, if you walk around, a residential neighborhood. So I don't understand how it is classified as general business and how the town could approve a project like this that would have such an impact on the neighborhood and all the taxpayers in the neighborhood. A couple of other things to consider in addition to the water pressure is what happens when there's a fire there? How does that additional use impact the pressure for firefighting? And also, no one's mentioned, and maybe someone has, that there are lots of little ones walking the streets now to that neighborhood, bringing more cars and more congestion and the possibility of a serious accident is something that we really should consider. I would ask this board respectfully to decline this project. We do need housing, that is very obvious, but there are more appropriate places to put a project like this with 44 units. Thank you for your time.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Good.
My name is Hector Granados, and I live at 577 Pleasant Street, directly across, of course. I am new to the neighborhood, my wife and I. We have a one-year-old right now, and like everyone said, there is a lot of traffic, of course, water pressure, but no one's mentioned the power for this. I did read the paper, they said they're going to have sewage and other site improvements, but nothing about power. We occasionally have brownouts, sometimes blockouts, and those occasionally, brownouts will turn into these blockouts. So has then been, has there been a study for this?
That would be up to the utility company once they submit plans, but these have been preliminary status right now, so no, nothing's been presented to the utility company, I would think.
All right. And then, of course, though, it's been renovating everywhere, like that little dog park at Pine Street, right, or Pine Ave, and then the Glen Echo Park, which is beautiful, but the parking there isn't meant for 43 units, correct? It's only for residenials, so this is going to be impact, big impact, basically. That's mostly it, just against the project.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that'd like to be heard from the public?
Is this on?
Yes.
So my name is John Clock. I live at 530 Pleasant Street, and I'd just like to add, live to what all my other neighbors are saying about the car accidents and stuff. I've lived on Pleasant Street for 61 years. I've seen both of my parents end up in the hospital. I've seen Elliot Hanson the night his car got crashed. I've seen cars go across my front lawn and take out my neighbor's car. It's a very dangerous street, and to add that much more traffic to it is crazy. There's no way, that frontage isn't wide enough for those people pulling in and out of there, talking about 83 parking units or something. Where are you going to put the snow in the wintertime? Where are they going to plow the snow to? That lot's not big enough.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to ask if anyone online?
I will. I just want to make sure everybody here is set, does anybody else here want to talk? Thank you. Is anybody online that would like to speak about this project? Thank you. Anybody on the board have any other questions right now?
I'm good.
I'm assuming at this point, you gentlemen would be asking for a continuance?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a date set that we could get that to, Bill?
Well, at minimum, it would be the June 26 meeting. That is one, two, three, we have three items on that, so that would be at minimum, because I don't know how long it's going to take to revise plans, so.
I think if we could, we'd like to be on the June 26 meeting, and as we approach that date, if we need additional time, we'll just request a further continuance, if that makes sense.
Okay.
I'm open to that.
Motion made. Second.
Okay, before I say all in favor, just so everybody understands, at this point in time, the public hearing is still continued, continuing until the next meeting of June 26.
June 26 in this room?
In this room here, it'll be at 6:30. So at that point in time, the applicant will come again with, you know, hopefully have updated their plans, maybe revised anything compared to a lot of the comments that has been made tonight, and we can kind of get a little bit more comprehensive plan as what's going to go forward. So anybody, can I have a vote on the motion to accept the continuance? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Thank you all, thank you all for participating, I appreciate it. General business, meeting minutes. I had reviewed these earlier, so I'm good. Anybody, has anybody got any comments on the meeting minutes?
I do.
I made the corrections that Paul sent me.
I had reviewed them, I thought it was, I thought we're okay, so. I had reviewed what you sent out earlier. Are these the revised ones, or?
No, Paul, Paul had one correction, he had one correction, which I've made.
Okay.
I have a correction.
Just tell me afterwards, and I'll make it.
Well, can I, can I have a motion to accept the meeting? Excuse me, excuse me, people, I'm sorry. Excuse me, our hearing is still going on, so please take it outside. Thank you. Thank you very much. No, we have to, we still got a few other things going on. Thank you. So can I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of May 8, 2025? Can I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Can I have, is there any other business, Bill?
No, sir.
Can I have a motion to close the meeting?
So made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay.